It is 7:30 and we are out of executive session and back into the public session. We'll pick up the agenda with the pledge of allegiance, please rise. No special presentations. We will move on to superintendent's conference, Mr. Forte.
So, our rest of the wheels are wrapping up. The construction on the summer is wrapping up. And we're looking forward to putting together the planned additional projects for next summer. What's the budget supposed to be? That's basically everything we have. Except for middle school sports season for the spring is going to start. And with the weather obviously is not great and the field is soaked. But we're actually looking out there. And they are going to do a couple practices indoors at a facility in Warden. So they can start the season kind of on time. That's it.
Let's just encourage all families that they have not pre-registered for kindergarten. It is open. We have 165 currently, which I shared with the board last year. Percentage of students coming in, 83 students that do not have a sibling in the district is 50% right now. Exactly 50%. So that's again the same trend we saw last year, but not the trend we've seen in the previous years. About 30%. I'm not sure exactly what that means, but we'll just keep an eye on it. And we do have a lot of new families in the district. Our future ready teams, we went out to the training for our last meeting and now the Valley View team and the Lakeview teams have had their initial planning meetings. The book you have is tomorrow. We've written the mission statements and we started our action plans tonight. So it was a really great day of planning. Looking forward to sharing the mission statements with the board after our district meeting. And the digital citizenship night is at Irving View tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. Students in fourth and fifth grade are sharing their digital citizenship projects. And also the county prosecutor is coming to talk to Irving View families about cyber safety. 6:00 p.m. at Irving.
Any business ministry comments?
No comments.
It is 7:32 and we're going to open up for our first open public comment section for agenda items. Step up, put your name on the record. Seeing no one come up, we'll close our first open public comment section at 7:33 and move on toward agenda.
So I would like to move to a group following resolutions. We have education. We just have one education report from, we're changing the calendar meeting, or the calendar of our board of ed meetings from July 15th to July 22nd.
Since you said that you'd actually remember that on your roll call. Any other, any questions or comments about that change? I think everybody has an issue. I may be away, I could poke every question, yeah, but.
I'd still like that Charlie Peters will be here too.
All right, roll call please.
Mr. Cappellum?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Lorne?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Coe, would you mind moving to the whole business, the whole action meeting?
Certainly. So at the meeting, we move the board education reports on student enrollment for February. The medical also, on this also for February. And the ID report, we will also give three minutes from our board session and executive session for February by then, and the regular session will be made from February 11th.
Any questions on those reports that we will move through at our next meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business personnel. Mr. Lure.
I would like to move items one, two, and three. We have item 1A, we have, we're changing the new leave replacement teacher beginning date to 3/15. It's originally 3/20. We have leave replacement teachers, new hires attending conferences, digital citizenship night in section one. Please ignore the extraneous roll call below section one. We have substitutes. We have a substitute and we have a conference attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Just to confirm, the 1A, is it being changed to start 3/15, is that correct?
Yes. That's what I was looking for.
Any questions?
Just one, did you ask this voice?
It said Tyler Drucker from Los Angeles Catholic, and he was referring to us by one of our staff.
Ms. Cappellum, who's starting this school year, sorry?
He decided as soon as the new year could begin.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Cappellum?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Lorne?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass, can you move on to the finance please?
I would like to move resolution regarding the preliminary 2019, 2020 school district budget. We have 10 items for approval, starting with the first one, which would lead to approve to the executive, sending from the executive county superintendent to approve to advertise despite recent clients providing more critical conduct standards. Instead appropriations follows, we have a general fund, 33 million, 208,017 dollars. Special revenue fund, 286,000, 284 dollars. A total of 33,000, 33 million, 1094,301 dollars. We also have raising taxes to the general funds at 31 million, 210,000, 284 dollars for that school year. And also we have a budget, an improved adjustment for health benefits in the amount of 141,769 dollars to offset the increase in health benefits premiums. We have one, two, three, four, five items regarding travel expenses, which are not re-stated for the off to look at. And the last two items that board of crews travel related expenses, related expense reimbursements in accordance with New Jersey statutes for a maximum expenditure of $57,000 for all staff and board members. And the final item is to accrue a maximum annual expenditure for professional services in accordance with New Jersey regulations. Auditor of $31,000, attorney, $85,000, and architect, $5,000.
Second. Any questions, comments? I don't know if it's long, but appreciate everybody's engagement, particularly the finance committee that I know has spent a lot of time going up with this. Damaris, obviously, Steve, their staff. Any questions, comments?
How do you feel about the town council presentation? When will that be? I'll ask them. Okay, so it'll be sometime during the day and 21.
Did you get any feedback from them, if they felt like they wanted to watch the video or were they referring to other comments?
They like, they like that we do it. They all feel that, it'd be hard to say without the words, you know, because my feelings, my feelings are, I think they're, they like that they hear from us. They do like the short ones, take over the whole deal. They also don't feel like it's required.
Yeah, I guess my feeling is if, unless they say, we're not interested, we've got a lot on our agenda, then I'm in favor of doing it. I think it's good to show them what our question looks like. You know, if they get questions on it, not that I expect them to be experts on it, but at least know what we're doing and a lot of different things going on. I think that's good.
That is the reason why we don't put a senior center in our, if they got back to the site and they didn't want to do it.
They, you know, they have other things going on.
Wow, we had ship on by, you're back by sea.
Sounds like it's time to go to referendum.
School budget is too poor to receive.
I did have one thing that I know I've talked to Damaris and Steve in a few weeks about. The one item that I wanted to kind of bring up for discussion, see what everybody's feelings were, was the adjustment for health benefits and the amount of 141,769 dollars to offset the increase in health benefit premiums. I know, I know we talked about this. I think, I think we as in this budget are able to absorb that increase in health benefits premiums this year. And I think when I sat down with Damaris and Steve, and one of the things I was looking at was, okay, where do we feel comfortable with our reserves? We worked on that over the years and we've used it, in my opinion, very strategically to not have to go to referendum. There are literally districts immediately around us that had to go to referendum for things like roofs and security vestibules. We've been able to do those in addition to all three of the schools getting fairly, I wouldn't say large additions, but construction in the buildings for media centers, rooms to create additional rooms and divide rooms off and everything. So we've spent a decent amount of money, but we've been able to do that while still increasing our, our reserves at a point where if we needed to tomorrow to do a 1.8 billion dollar project, that's the thing we do. But if we did, we'd be able to do it and still have a cushion in our reserve accounts. So my, you know, we use those accounts in a way similar to a savings account, even if, you know, raise that fund to a point where you're able to do projects. Talking to Steve and Damaris, looking at the long-range facilities plan, I think we're at a point where we're, at least for the next year, I don't want to speak future, I don't know, but at least for now, we're at a point where that number is pretty good at about just under 3 million. Damaris, that's right, 1.4? Okay, 1.4. I mean, both reserves. So I think we're at a good point where that's a good number to be at. And if we didn't take this waiver for health benefits with the potential, probably some excess surplus that we probably will have going in, pulling some out to do some projects, I think it looks like, Damaris correct me if I'm wrong, but we should be fairly steady in that 3 billion dollar range at reserves by the end of next year. Yes. So in my opinion, if we can do that and not take the additional 141,000 dollars, which would reduce the burden to the taxpayers, then I would be in support of that. But interest of the year, what are the board's feelings on that? That does, by the way, have an effect on some projects. So there are a few projects that we would need to make a decision to pay out the reserves and lower that reserve a little bit, or not do those projects and wait for, or pre-fund those team projects here.
Ms. Cappellum, I'm sorry. You said at the end of 2019, but 2010. Right, now that it's 2011.
That's what you should know, how much you have now.
Right, but maybe I misunderstood your question, but if we don't take the waiver with the surplus that we expect from the budget and the projects, what do you think you would be at in those accounts at the end of 2020?
That is a tricky question. I mean, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't even think I got this far.
Yes, it would be the shape, however, I want to be realistic now, because it was pointing to me to do this one pound surplus out of, I don't know.
Well, I think also we, we had some unexpected expenses issued. And if we pull some money out of reserves to do some of the projects that are going to be taken out of the budget, it's not to the taxpayer, the benefits payer. We do run the risk of not putting back all the money to take out. In the past, we've put back almost all of it. We have a healthy reserve of 3.1 million. It'd be hard for me to give you a number of where we might think would be, but I think for the first year, for the first shifts that I did here, I would say there's a likelihood that the, that our balance would go down. Not substantially, not like it's going to go from 3.1 to 2.1, but it might go from 3.18 to, you know, 2.9 or something. After the projects. So it's not, it's not like it's going to be a traumatic decrease, but we do run the risk of not putting all the money back.
But also, like, there are projects that we could, you could take, say, this security thing, 120,000 off the table, or do part of it, which we may not be seeing that number down. Is that right?
I don't, I mean, are you using that just as an example, or you want to talk about the security?
Hey, I wouldn't mind talking about it. It's on my mind too. As an example, it's 120,000, so it's roughly equivalent, so it's not bad to talk about.
So one of the reasons why it's important to keep that there is because there's going to be some state funding for that, because of that border. We don't know any details.
And I can have some information, the school board's legislative section. So I guess the state bonds twice a year. They bond in the spring and they go out and bond in December. They are not positioned to be able to bond now. So it looks like it's going to, they're going to go out and issue that in December. So the school board is saying that we're really looking at grants being available or seeing where that money is going to be. Basically, you're going to have to buy some form.
So not, not willing?
No, they're, they're pretty comfortable, but it's not going to happen. They're not going to get in debt, they should be until December.
So that, that's 120,000 dollars. I, I did tell all the committees that I don't recommend doing that project and totally know where, where that money is at, because they haven't said, they haven't committed to refunding districts and they put it out first. They haven't committed to that. So I think that I would, we'd run the risk of not being able to gather that money. So I, I want to be ready to go when it's ready. So that's why I have that on there. So that's where I stand. I think, I think there's going to be some money available. I don't know what kind of numbers it will be.
So I have a question, just to better understand the process for tonight. We are definitely voting on the budget tonight. We can actually vote no on certain line items within this section of finance, correct?
Not necessarily. What you have to do is kind of gather at, and come up with a number. And Damaris can say, they say, you said, I want to cut 100,000 dollars. It is a small number. So you can just say, we, instead of, instead of the budget being 33.30, 33.6, 33 million 694, you can say 33 million 6, and show us the cuts. It's 94,000.
Or we can cut the 141,769, right?
Right, cut, cut the, the general fund.
Right, okay. And.
That will cover the tax payer.
Correct. And the general fund, right? Both the general.
Are we also looking at the security 120,000 tonight as well? Is that one?
That would be a, I think, because we, when we allocate the 141,000 to the taxpayer, we allocate to those projects, security.
Okay.
So what I would say though is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if, if we get, so let's say that for some reason the state does something crazy and, you know, the timeline that Dino just laid out doesn't happen, and all of a sudden it moves to the left really quickly and there, there's great money available, that doesn't mean that we can't do that private. We can certainly do it.
Just out of service?
Correct. We have to do that in reserves, or bump it on the project, right? I mean, once we, these are guidelines on how we have the money allocated, but every year we're always having, like, as the year goes on, if something changes, we can adjust it, call it on bull.
Sure. Sometimes we have a project budget, it goes over. Like, say I have a 120,000 dollar budget, which sounds, it's going to cost 140, very often, just going to be able to do one of the other projects, or we do it out of reserves.
And then also at the end of the year, like even this year, Damaris has a few projects, so if we're going to try to pull into this this little year that we were, you know, like the late view cafeteria table, right? We were looking at doing those next this little year, but based upon where she feels we're budgeting now, she's going to pull that into this year. So it's only.
So the first, I guess I'll ask one more question and then I'll follow up with my comments. I believe it winds up being eight dollars per taxpayer per year. For the average house, for the average house, an eight dollar increase, that's what this 141 would represent.
We acted like dollars.
Nine dollars, okay. Nine dollars. My comment, I guess, is first of all, I appreciate Mike bringing this up because, you know, I think sometimes this is a delicate topic, right? The staff, the administration would always like more funding just for, just for emergency, for, you know, for any kind of emergency state. However, you know, it is nine dollars in perpetuity, right? For the rest of people, like, all time. Unless we're looking to drop budgets past, below previous years, this would be an additional nine every year for the rest of our lives. So I actually, I, I'm glad they wrote it up and I do agree, if we have the opportunity to, I mean, it sounds like with our reserves, we could, this wouldn't really add our reserves that much more. So if we could afford to, I agree that perhaps it's something we could do.
Dave, any other questions?
No, I've discussed a couple of items with Damaris and a few more with Steve. As usual, I'm unhappy with it, because I would like to do more and I would also like to spend less, and unfortunately, I don't have any good ideas to propose to do it, so I don't really have any, I don't really have anything to say.
I think it's wrong to go first.
I would, I would add, I would say, I mean, one of the things that I have, I talk a lot about are the effects. It's not a lot of money, it's eight dollars a month. Eight, a hundred, oh, right, eight dollars, you know, sorry, it's how many you sell a month. But in my mind, it's still above 20%. I don't think we need to take it. I think it puts a waypoint in the sand, but obviously, when we look at this budget, look at it seriously, we're not looking to maximize it every year, just because we can. I understand it's an important weight that we have, but in our situation where we are, I don't really need it, so I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I would agree. So, you know, you make a good point that whatever, seven dollars, nine dollars, whatever the taxpayers are, it's fair to ground. Also, there's a bunch of cycles, whenever we come up with that, that's going to be there for us. So, you know, unless you come up with a, you know, some way to decrease spending dramatically, that's the hand, that's the hand we, we develop, this is state, comes up with a much better funding for, to district, to section hours. So, and if you take a look at the budget, it's almost like a competitive conversation with this, you know, with that, so if you take a look at the pie and have it sliced up, we really don't have a lot of money for discretionary spending, like, technology and some of the other, you know, some of the other things we want to do. Majority of the money is going to salaries and the healthcare benefits are absolutely, you know, astronomic, where they started, where, when I first came on board, many years ago. And that's really something that, you know, somebody paying way much higher than ours is going to have to pay a rip off, because it's not trending that way. You know, you're not going to have much money left for computers and some of the other things that we like to do besides paying salaries and healthcare. It's really a very serious problem if you're facing a full, you know, board of commissioners and I can tell you, the current administration really, getting high marks here, really did efficiently improve with our money. Take a look at the, these rep rents, they go through the second questions, they go through these others, moves, security, you know, window repair, boiler repair, you know, we've done major, really multi-million dollar projects over the last four years without doing a, a rep rent or a second purchase. That's really, it can be done, quite a way. So it's forged, great minds to taxpayers, as well as our students and their parents, making sure they're getting good education and good facilities to get into their education. We also are eliminating the usage rate for athletics and clubs in the school, which is something that's been in the budget for, since about 2010. That's a nice name. Just so happens it's the last one I've been able to, I don't know. That's kind of what I wanted to say.
Ms. Cappellum, could you tell us last year, what the percentage over was or what the amount was that we took the waiver on that last year?
We did, yes.
But it was significantly lower.
Last year was approximately 3.8%.
3.81.
Totally.
And that would have significantly affected our, or this?
This year?
No, last year.
Last, last year, those, yes, it would, it would be nice to take that additional waiver if we had to do any of the services.
I guess my point is that that amount last year is much more significant than this one.
Last year was mostly, it was a lot of taxes.
Yeah, we had a, we had a modest.
And I guess that's my point to anybody watching, that last year was extremely, it was a lot of money that we couldn't not take. This year, it's 141,000 dollars.
The increase in health insurance last year was a half, 12%. So much shorter than yesterday.
I will say that, and I think I've said this just about every budget cycle, I don't know where long-term school budgets go. When you face a 2% cap, and how much goes to salary benefits, is it 80 or 85% of our budget?
I would say at least 90% to go, roughly.
So with that percentage that's going towards salary benefits, our salaries go up greater than 2%, our benefits go up greater than 2%, and we've got a 2% cap. So with all that, we give a lot of kudos to Damaris and the administration for figuring out a way to get through these budgets in a way that still allows us to, this budget includes 250,000 dollars towards Valley View's field, which has been on the docket forever and I know Don's been pushing for it. And it's, it's not only an eyesore because it doesn't look good, but it's having an effect on the students because they physically can't go out there and play their athletics on their own field. And it's dangerous to the point that we're probably restricting some of our recessed engine classes out there. We continue to find a way to fund these different projects. I mean, we added a couple of years ago, I think we're now on our, is this the fourth year we're doing pro books or third year?
Third year.
Third year, so I mean, the first year we were.
Well, this will be, this will be the fourth, actually, we had it for.
So, I mean, that's a, you talk about costs that come in perpetuity, at least for the foreseeable future. We're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of 70,000 dollars in pro books that we continue to buy. It's the right thing for the students. We're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of seventy thousand dollars in Pro Books that we continue to buy. It's the right thing for the students. But these costs have all been added, um, and stay within, um, a two percent cap plus obviously some things like these health insurance waivers and other things that we have. But in general, um, not a lot of room to be able to move around it. So I, I don't know where we had long-term because you can't take ninety percent of your budget and grow that by four percent or something like that and then, and then have a two percent cap on the entire budget. But I give a lot of credit to the administration for, to you to find ways to, uh, get through it. My personal recommendation is that this year, um, and kudos to the administration for getting us to this point and the board for getting us to this point, my recommendation is that we do not take the health insurance waiver in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand seven sixty-nine. But Mr. Cass and Mr. Kim, you guys moved it. So if you feel the same way, you certainly can adjust the motion.
Yeah, I have a problem.
I see. Grace, do you have the numbers to go up to that?
I do.
Okay. Do you want me to read it in? Okay. So, Mr. Cass, I'll read this in and then if you and Mr. Kim will go ahead and if you will approve it. So, um, I'll just go read the entire thing, guys, at least up until the tax waivers are here. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Denham will approve the following resolution regarding the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school district budget. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent that the Board, the Denham Board of Education in the County of Morris, New Jersey approves the following resolution. Be resolved that the nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty tentative budget for the Denham Board of Education be approved by the Board of Education and submitted to the Executive County Superintendent for approval to advertise. This budget meets requirement for providing corporate blow content standards and consists of appropriations as follows. General funds, thirty-three million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Special revenue fund, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, for a total of thirty-three million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-two. Be further resolved that there should be, there should be raised for taxes for the general funds, thirty-one million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty, five hundred and eighty-five, excuse me, for the ensuing school year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. The remainder of the resolution will remain the same, as you said.
How's the, how's the, how's the, uh?
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct. The following, uh, I'm just gonna read the whole thing, keep going, I'm sorry. Whereas the Denham Board, Denham Board of Education recognizes school staff and board members will incur travel expenses related to, in the scope of their current responsibility and for the travel that promotes delivery or destruction or further efficient, furthers the efficient operation of the school district. And whereas NJAC six A colon two-three B dash one dot one, et cetera, requires, uh, board members to receive approval for these expenses by majority of the full voting membership of the board and staff members to receive prior approval of these expenses by the superintendent's rules and the majority of the full voting membership of the board. And whereas a Board of Education may establish for regular district business travel only, an annual school year threshold of one hundred and fifty dollars per event where prior board approvals shall not be required unless this event threshold for a staff member is exceeding, is exceeded during July first through June thirtieth. And whereas travel and related expenses not compliant with NJAC six colon, six A colon twenty-three B dash one dot one be, be deemed by the Board of Education to be necessary and unavoidable as noted on the approved Board of Education out of district travel and reimbursement forms now. Therefore, be resolved, Board of Education approves all travel not compliant with NJAC six A colon two-three B dash one, uh, one dot one. As necessary, as being necessary and unavoidable as noted on the approved Board of Education out of district travel and reimbursement forms and. Therefore, be resolved, Board of Education approves all travel not compliant with NJAC six A colon two-three B dash one dot one as necessary and unavoidable. Sorry, did I just read that again? Yep. Sorry. Be resolved, be it further resolved, the Board of Education approved the travel and related expenses re-impulsive in accordance with NJAC six A colon two-three A dash seven dot three A, a maximum of expenditure of fifty-seven thousand dollars for all staff and board members. Be it further resolved, Board of Education approved maximum annual expenditure for professional services in accordance with NJAC six A colon two-three A dash five dot one, dot, dot two, subsection one, auditor thirty-one thousand, attorney eighty-five thousand dollars, architect five thousand dollars. Second.
I don't think we need this.
Right in, right in, it's good. Mr. Cass, Mr. Kim, who gives a good with that?
Yeah, we're good. Here you go.
All right. Any other questions or comments on budget? The, I should say the preliminary budget approval list, we'll go through the county and we'll get your back to the county. And, uh, we will have final approval in April.
April twenty-nine, four, five.
Any other questions? Low call please.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capell?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Luer, would you mind moving to new business, no action to be taken under first time?
Sure. At the next meeting, we will be discussing the voting on several items. Item one is new, uh, cashing out, uh, vacation days for several secretaries. I'm sure there will be more for that next time. Uh, there is a couple, there's a couple of medical requests as well.
Questions on personal? Mr. Capell, would you mind moving to the instructional program, no questions?
Certainly. At the next meeting, I or someone else will be, uh, moving items one and two. One is the, the summer, the list of field trip requests and number two, our workshop expense list, um, right now just for Damaris. Also, I apologize for sending out the I, the, um, minutes late when he asked the questions about, and I know I just, uh, had to just remove it.
Questions on personal? Mr. Kim, would you mind moving to policy revisions, no action to be taken this time?
Sure. During the next meetings, I or someone else will be motioning or moving to approve the policies listed under, in section seven, dot one. And that includes, uh, unsafe school choice options in the past, basically, or second reading and option.
Questions on policy? Mr. Cass, future finance and election.
At the next meeting, I'll ask the board to approve milk one check, number one-one-seventy-seven, the amount of two thousand seven hundred and three dollars, ninety percent. And any other financial items that we can all be cleaning out.
Mr. Wagner? Any questions on finances? Mr. Wagner, if you want to press through presentation?
Sure. Um, at the next meeting, there will be a motion to approve joint transportation movement with the Education Services Commission of Morris County for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Questions?
I have a quick one.
Sure.
What is the joint transportation order?
Damaris, uh, James is asking about the joint transportation here.
This is, uh, this transportation is, we approve this every year, is approving, uh, education services to provide services to the district, um, to the, um, as, uh, district counts as well as any other special accounts that we have in that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on presentation? Uh, we'll move on to the good of the cause. Uh, I'll, I'll let you do lump everything together, clean your reports, post comments, discussion items, or, uh, if you have some things. Yeah. Anybody have anything to discuss?
Please. Um, I'll be at Shantin's and I'm planning and they're going to be delayed. So, uh, if you're very generous, we'll send the best, uh, maybe, uh, money from them for, uh, various side of the school district. So, um, that was just not tonight, but, um, it's something we should, uh, talk, maybe as a finance committee, you know, we can use, uh, you know, they haven't given us any money yet, I don't know, I don't know much, we can, uh, maybe, uh, for the summer, maybe. And I don't, we could, uh, just go back, uh, restore what they were achieving, uh, for the year.
Actually, they have, they've been funding things throughout the year. Uh, a couple, they were, they funded, each year they usually fund a fairly large assembly type program for kids because that money is from municipal lines, which is for drug, character and drug prevention, alcohol, character and. We did, we did a vaping program with them, we did some other character and type things. So they have been, they have been giving us money to, uh, they don't actually give us the money, they donate the program to us, they pay.
So when you, you, so, yeah, it's, um, we, we, yeah, we, we, those, uh, such, these programs, uh, this, uh.
The, uh, one of the people who worked, for some reason, funding, they, they let us know. Then I, I sent it over to the principal and he's, he decided what they want, they usually fund, it's been pretty good.
So just for, because we're talking budget, so for next school year, it's been all of those programs that the district plans to do with the budgeted in the budget and then should somebody donate or cover something, that'll just be us, is that right?
Look, we, we don't, I don't have any money for that specific thing.
No.
But that's usually covered by some kind of donation or something.
I see.
Well, we have it covered in the past too. Like, uh, you know, I guess it's, it's under, what do we have it under?
That's why I guess what I'm trying to ask, what, what do we have in the budget?
Like, we had John Powell.
We had, um, it could be, I think it goes for students or whatever, then we would go under, it could be under, uh, construction, or it could be, it's more directed to, um, there's a teacher component that would be a professional, you know, it depends.
It has been brought to my attention, uh, that there's been some questions about the St. Clair's program. Um, I wanted to ask, um, just some general questions. I was wondering, uh, who decides or who makes up the St. Clair's, uh, portion of the procedures or the policies or like, what, do we oversee anything that they may do in terms of, uh, whether it's screening children or, um, how they're involved with the children? Uh, is this, is this, is this, uh, something that the administration actually oversees? Or do they come in with their own preset sort of policies and procedures when they have, um, when they see certain children against them, certain children?
So we, I think the main part about this is when we, so we, we saw a need.
Okay.
I can go back.
Sure.
Yeah, we saw a need, we knew we needed to do something for the mental health of students. So we researched three or four different companies. The one that's established and actually works in Morris Hills Regional, the one where they have, it's called Effective School Solutions. We looked at that.
Okay.
They're, they're very expensive, it costs, it would cost us at least three hundred thousand dollars to use that. We used another, we looked at another company, I don't remember the name, we, we had a nice conversation with them. And then, then I said, you know what, well, let's see what St. Clair's has.
Sure.
Because we have a great relationship with them for other things. So I said, let's see if they're interested. Now, St. Clair's had never done this before, we had never done that. We wanted also to do it in a, we wanted to provide a program that we thought was, was robust, but also economically, you know, efficient, right? So we did decide, and if you recall, to do this pilot program.
Okay.
So we never, neither side had done this before and we wanted to try this pilot program. We did realize that as we've gone along, we've had to make some tweaks here. So the answer to your specific question is, it's, it's kind of a team, we've all took it, nobody says like, oh, this is what we're doing, get out of here, you know? So we worked together on it, so it's not just that. Um, but one of the things I did for everybody is in next week's folder for your, for my report from this Friday, I have all the documents that we use, like all the screening tools, the letters parents get, waivers, all out of there. Okay. I also have a document together on some talking points that I asked Grace to go over with me. So she gave a couple of tough talking points, I thought it was pretty important, okay? Um, and, you know, it, it's definitely not the way Effective School Solutions does because again, they come in, they've done this for a long time, that's all they did.
Okay.
Where St. Clair's again was really kind of a new word for us. So, um, we didn't realize that there should be tweaks in it.
So it's still being developed and, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not foolproof. Um, we, we feel very happy with the success of the, uh, you know, there's only been one incident, brought to my attention, something that you would be correct.
Okay.
That got to my level.
Okay.
And, uh, and it was not a huge issue, it's a, it's an issue that we think that we'd be correct, it's not something that's not correct.
Okay, great. The, so hopefully that answered that. The, the one concern I have is, um, if St. Clair's, um, I'm wondering if St. Clair's has a cookie cutter approach for, um, for any kind of intake patients that they may get, which may not be necessarily applicable in the education setting. Uh, so, um, if, if, um, if you and Grace or, or Dr. Collins, you know, I'm not sure how this could be discussed, you know, but, uh, you know, I might suggest it perhaps, I am peeking. So that's something that, um, I, I, I'll let the board or, you know, you decide. Uh, but I guess my concern is, um, if there is a cookie cutter approach that St. Clair's is using to, you know, maybe that, that, that works for them as St. Clair's, my concern is that it may be inappropriate in an educational setting. So, um, and, and if I'm wrong, please, I'm okay, I'm not the expert, I'm just, um, I'm just concerned about it. So, um, and, um, I, I guess if it is a ongoing process, uh, do we have the pathways to, to take uh, any kind of suggestions or, um, you know, feedback and are we prepared to, um, make modifications?
Sure.
It sounds like that.
Yeah, so right off the bat, we already came up with a couple, thank you, sorry, I'm shaking. Okay. I think, I think the best answer to your question would be for right now.
Okay.
Would be review the doctors I put in the folder for Friday.
Okay.
When you get a chance to, after your review, give me a call.
Okay.
Put it on the I P agenda, we should put that on the I P agenda, I want to, Collins, next time, and we'll have the discussion. But in the interim, between the time you look them over on the weekend and before the next I P being told, we told, are we able, why don't you give me a call? Or, or you and I can even talk on the, on the next word before the next word, sure. And that way we can, you know, if you have any lingering questions for what's in there.
Okay.
But I think the most important thing is, if it is cookie cutter, it shouldn't be, it won't be, I don't think it is. Okay. And I think that we are also willing to grow and learn, I think that was the whole point of it.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, and, uh, it is serving its purpose, it's doing a lot of good for kids that are, that are struggling with some serious mental health issues that we have in our school district. Which is, which is really the goal, that maybe, maybe there is, you know, just like anything else, I mean, just like everything we do, we should always learn and try to figure out ways to do better. And everybody's a metalhead on a whole side. So it's not just like, we're, we're, we're not trying to make it to any like walls, when we, when we say, hey, maybe we can do this better. Everybody's listening, wanting to make, go out and make this something, uh, you know, groundbreaking for the area.
Yeah, I think that, um, I, I'm not sure how we rank in terms of other districts and, uh, with programs like this. So if we are ahead of the curve, that's great. Um, and, um, I think in order for us to continuously stay ahead of the curve, we need to be flexible and, you know, change to, to address needs or, um, or address if we overset our, not.
Sure.
It's probably a good time for us to evaluate that we are looking to. It's probably a good time for us to evaluate that we are looking to expand to the two schools, so I think it's probably a good time for the I P committee to look and say, hey, what have we got, what are we doing, what lessons learned we have, how are we going to implement it at the other schools?
As the chairperson of our meeting, I ask that you could see if Grace will...
Yeah, I got that on page, I'll remember this here.
Thank you.
I have an update from the legislative committee, I asked you apparently if you're interested in that, so maybe they're coming, it's probably worth it. Meeting was really interesting, covered some ground on things that are coming up legislatively. Update on the abolishing, there's a bill to abolish the superintendent salary cap, that's actually been held with the assembly, and school boards and analysts, but it probably won't move until after assembly elections are called, so right now, that seems to be unfulfilled. There is actually a set of bills that are being fast tracked, there's a senate bill and an assembly bill, which would extend the, like, the statute of limitations on youth violence. They are actually going to extend them to up to thirty-seven years. So, it's actually eighteen plus thirty-seven, so once a person turns eighteen, there's a thirty-seven year span in front of there. School boards has weighed in, obviously that can be really problematic for districts in terms of people who are not on, or who are gone, could be a, potentially a big issue. One of the things that, phrase that, Damaris, I would ask you maybe to think about is the effect on our personal insurance, because you probably will raise the premiums, or they'll be putting in line, you know, excluding, so it may be something we want to reach out to our insurance people about. It does look like it's going to pass probably within the year. Let's see, I mentioned about security, uh, if, issue of debt, that will be until, I'm sorry, did I say budget twenty twenty, I meant budget twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty.
Right. That that's going to potentially be the one, but there's still a lot of moving parts about even exactly how much money and what it's going to be available for. Then there are two bills, or two sets of bills that are making their way through. One is a bill that we give non-teaching employees such as teachers, assistant bus drivers, cafeteria needs tender like detection. The school boards is obviously opposing this and asking us to read the bills and to reach out to our legislators appropriately, because this could obviously have a pretty significant negative impact for us. The other one is a bill that will limit our ability to subcontract services for things like cafeterias, that go on, there's, there's a series of things that it would limit our ability to be able to subcontract for, again, school boards is obviously against that because it would be a pretty burdensome set of requirements. So, I did not get a chance to make a copy of these, I can just send them to y'all, and like I said, the information to reach out to other legislators, if you'd like to make your statements now. And that's all.
So, you said the management system was a mess, and there they could tell a few ways of resolving the house, or something like that?
Yep.
Would it be a question to have a resolution to support?
Well...
Some of these, I mean, you know, some of the school writers, representatives, periodically on, a lot of different issues, the educational ones, but, um...
Do you have, well...
Yeah, there's some of these here that have a, they have like a, a barometer as to how they, when it's going to fall on these for the legislature, if they're, if they have a good chance of passing.
They did have that, yes, you know, they, they, because they were saying they would like us to advocate that, we still have a decision on it, I guess they feel there's, you know, some traction for it, so, you know, they, they want, they'd like us to, to make up. They actually did also give me two resolutions, sample resolutions, we could adopt as a board, I think something to do as well.
I think that would be a good idea, certainly individually. I wish, or I think it's something you have, you have to do.
Thanks, Peter.
Yep.
Steve, can you tell us, like...
This one? How are we calling?
Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought, I thought that it was this round. So, I didn't get a lot of, we, 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 so, so, then I'm how, I'm...
Are you talking about late, late fees?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I, I know it's coming up, I know it's kind of...
I'll find out. Before I, before I can hear the question.
Late graduation, graduation, it's scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to kind of have a discussion, and there was, I know, and Steve, I think forwarded this to the board, there was a concerned citizen about the use of a property that's actually not in it, the use of what was formerly Hamilton Farm, which is in Boone Township, to be, it's been now closed and sold. It's obviously a farm that was being used for, I guess, pumpkin, corn and, and regular crop. That is now proposed and pretty far along to be transitioned into a medical marijuana cannabis crop farm. Once again, not in Denville, but right on the border of Denville in Boone Township. There was a concerned citizen that brought it to our attention, that value the school was within about one point seven miles or so of the location of where this farm would Despite my personal opinion, from a board perspective, I know I had, a bunch of, I had conversations with several people today, and it's, it's, it's a process that obviously is out of this township's jurisdiction, it is being evaluated by another township, although there is definitely communication between Boone Township and Denville Township, administrators and, and as well as representatives of the town, both towns. My personal opinion is that it is not a school issue, therefore not a Board of Education issue. It is not really within walking distance of the school, there is going to be no retail location, they're not going to be processing medical marijuana there, or producing any finished products there. There is a significant amount of security, it's going through a state security approval process that they believe will be pretty stringent, but although it's close to our school, I don't think it's within a proximity that I would be concerned about anything from a health aspect, and certainly health and safety of our students, I would be concerned about. But, I want to open the dialogue to make sure that that's my personal opinion, one of seven. If anybody has any other feeling, please let me know.
I agree that it's not our town, it, as a school board, we should not be measuring forth an opinion on it. If any members of the board have personal opinions on it, we are certainly not going to put a muzzle on, on any of them, anybody here, you can go out and do whatever you want to, but the school board should stay the heck out of it. It's not our town, it's not our business.
I don't know if I agree with Mr. Luer, something to be accurate.
Anybody else have any differing opinion, or... I would just remind everybody that we as a, like Mr. Luer said, we certainly have, can have our own personal opinions, and we're all citizens of Denville, and just make sure that if you do make your opinions known, you're making them known as a citizen, not as the opinion of a Board of Education. From my stance, unless something changes, we're not moving forward. I don't see this as a Board of Education issue, and I don't feel as though we will be giving our opinion or thoughts or comments in one way or another. Any other good of the cause?
So, Lakeview PTA has two events coming up this Friday night, is Family Fun Night, and April fifth is, for example, Texas Public, or their annual Tricky Trade at Saracen.
Late graduation, Lakeview is on Friday, March fifteenth at nine fifteen.
Yeah, I didn't, but, I'm glad you brought it up, so I would be embarrassed. No. I don't know if that's, you know, it's like a, a little...
Maybe a little...
Not feeling shy or awkward. Sure, it's a little bit shy.
Everybody's just lighting up some things.
Oh, oh, see, that's a...
I, I actually, now that you've brought up Lakeview graduation, I did want to mention that Mr. Kay over at Lakeview invited, I don't know if he invited, anybody made, to the second grade show. I saw one of their dress rehearsals last week, and I will say, just as always, an honorable job by him and the staff. I also got to, so it was the fourth and fifth graders that were watching it that, that they had a whole different session, the whole school gets to see the, the kids performing. And when I was, I mean, I was obviously very impressed with the second graders, but I was almost more impressed with Mr. Kay and the way he spoke to the fourth and fifth graders about encouraging the kids, remember when you were on stage and you were nervous and, you know, and the fourth and fifth graders were absolutely perfect. All the kids were encouraging, they were giving high fives to the second graders as they were coming in, as they were going out. I was just so impressed with our staff and our students, and it was just, it's cool to say, and I appreciate when the staff invite us, and for those, if you could ever make any of, any of the opportunities to hop in to see any of those, I definitely recommend you to, it's great. Anything else? Is eight thirty-one, and I'll open up for our second open comment section, anything remain for districts? See anyone fresh to the microphone? I will close our open second public comment section at eight thirty-two P M. Do not give any for second executives.
I would like to add one more thing to good of the cause, if I might, Rurbe's Tricky Trade is coming up on March twenty-third. Sorry, I was supposed to say something about that, I would like to, so I apologize.
That's sort of the date, too, right?
No, it's Saturday. Uh, yes, it's ten to three P M., ten A M. to three, three P M.
Steve, I just have four minutes, go and you drop your tickets if you go, you don't have to say, we call on...
No, you gotta, you should really make sure you put your phone number on it, so they can call you.
Yes.
Yes, you, you do not have to be present to it. They call one number, and if they can get in touch with you, you get it, whether you're there, huh?
Awesome. All right, no need for second executives, why not?
Motion Rurbe, sir.
Second. Hello, and Mr. Luer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names?
None.
Any abstentions?
None.
We are closed at eight thirty-three P M.